We'll start with the council activity reports. We have some meetings coming up this week, but no committee meetings for me to report on. We did have our council retreat working session last week. Looking at later on in this agenda, scheduling a follow-up along with some additional work sessions to come out of that with some individual departments, just to do some more intensive planning. Otherwise, we declared our final snow emergency of the year back on April 1st. That was one where Tark was out, Ron was gone, watching his grandson Russell. So I declared it as emergency management director, glad we did with the number of vehicle or with the amount of snow that we got. But here's hoping we don't need to do another one until fall. Uh, or even, here's hoping we don't have to do another one until 2024. Yeah, I, huge credit to Ron, to your guys who were on that day. I know Bob and Jason were here at 2:00 in the morning, Lee came in at 6:00 that day to get us plotted out. And I don't know how late they worked, but then I think they were back on Sunday again working. So huge credit to them for getting us taken care of and getting us to the point where the snow can do the wonders that it's working now.
Thank you.
Otherwise, we don't have anything else activity to report. It's been a quiet week with Easter and everything coming up and understand the blessing Ron has given us. Neil?
Yes, got back from our week in Denmark, very successful trip. Seen a lot of Nature Energy's plants and headquarters, hog and pig farm, cattle farm. It's all quite, quite eye-opening trip. We hope that we can keep moving forward to get Nature Energy to build in our city. And then we had the retreat and all the department heads went over their wishes and objectives and quite an interesting meeting. And the last, we just got done with public works, pretty short meeting, a couple items from that are on our agenda.
Thank you.
I was in Denmark as well and I'm, like Neil said, I'm excited to see what comes next. I'm still cautiously optimistic. We had the council retreat and as a park and tree board meeting, we talked about the fire pit in the gazebo park and the Amby Park Shelter, as well as filling a vacancy that we had on board.
Jean?
I was also at the council retreat, but also the chamber board meeting. And they did approve the beer garden, so at that meeting.
All good?
Yeah, so that's all in the works.
After some heated debate?
A little heated debate.
Okay. I'm glad it went through.
Paul?
The financial meeting and also the council retreat.
Would I ask if any of the council of Tark or Neil or Megan, if there's anything we should all know about Denmark? I hate to put the three of you on the spot, but specifically relating to that, what did you get out of it? What justified the expense, I guess is kind of what I'm asking.
Well, you say they gave all the trip, I'll talk about the whole trip, but the reason...
Okay. Well, I think one of the things that was important for us is that we did like a side reconnaissance mission. So the three of us, unfortunately Chuck had gone home by that time, rented a car and went to one of the smaller towns that is about the size of Painesville that has a plant because, you know, we wanted to see what their feelings and thoughts were when Nature Energy wasn't there. And they all reported, you know, the people that spoke with us reported pretty good things. And they kind of just said that, which I thought was really positive actually, that they don't really notice that they're there and that they've heard that they're good employers. And they said occasionally driving past when the wind is right, you can smell it, but usually it's not something that they notice. And I just overall was really impressed with the plants themselves, you know, and the way, the science that goes into the soil testing and all of those things. So it's a lot of information, it's a lot to process. I think I'm still working on it, but I, I came away with a really positive impression. And I just, I don't know, it's, it's a large undertaking and I don't think that it would be something that the city would want to jump into without someone having seen it. Neil, you want to?
The, the plants themselves, very clean.
Yeah.
Everything was either paved or tarred or blocked. And the trucks, they, we watched one truck unload, there was no smell whatsoever and it had liquid mirror on the truck. And when, for their biohazard, the trucks were washed down with hot speed water. So when they go to farm, they aren't spreading anything, chicken flu and all this. So yeah, overall, I was impressed with their operation.
Something that I forgot to mention too, there were a number of people from Minnesota who were on the trip besides the four of us. And there was this, a couple who were, who farm, I think in, close to Winona. And they, one of the things they said that I thought was kind of a good or was interesting is that there is, there are a lot of mandates in Europe right now about disposal of waste and agriculture and, you know, things like that. And we don't know if that will happen here or if it will take decades to happen here. But I think if, what they thought is that if it does, it would be better for us, for our cities, especially, you know, smaller communities to be, you know, already have having done those things for years instead of behind the curve and scrambling to catch up, which I thought was a good point. So that's something I'm kind of keeping in mind going forward.
What I would add afterwards is, well, first of all, the other cities that came with us were Sauk Center, Freeport, St. James, Rock County, which is I think where St. James is, and then near Woodsland, the farmers are from Lubbock. But for Nature Energy's model to work, they need multiple locations. So it's not Painesville or nothing. It's, it's Painesville, it's Sauk Center, it's Freeport, plus we're looking at Wisconsin and other states as well. However, what they did like, and what they told me after the trip, is that they think Painesville is such a good location that they would like to host an open house here this summer and invite the other cities that they've met with and that went over there. Plus, they like Paul Thieland's comment about having farmers to meet with them and discuss, address their concerns. So they want to do that and they said sometime June or July, and they want to host this entire thing in Painesville. So I thought that was very possible.
My biggest concern is that it all seems too good to be true. Is there anything that gave you concern or hesitation?
I do wonder, one thing is because they don't have the extremes of temperature that we have, so I do wonder if it's going to be, you know, a different ballgame of course, when it's like 97 degrees and humid. But I just, I think for me, again, I keep, anybody that asks, I tell them it's cautious optimism, but I, I don't see anything so glaring as to outweigh the positives, no.
Neil, anything that concerned you?
There was, we went to three plants. And the first one was pretty good sulfur smell, I guess, pretty much smelled like when you're at a fireworks event and the cloud of smoke comes through. But he said they were doing maintenance and this was the worst it ever gets. And if that's the worst, the economic benefits to the city far outweigh a little sniff or two. And 500 feet away on the highway, we couldn't smell anything. So it was, and their smoke stack is not 200 feet high.
Which is what it would be here.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that could all be in our favor.
They didn't seem to like, want to be concerned or want to hide it or anything, you know, they were pretty upfront about this is why this smells this way and it usually doesn't. And, you know, the people in the towns didn't seem to have any concerns or seem as though it, you know, and they don't have any skin in the game, so to speak, so.
The third plant was their newest plant and there was absolutely no smell.
Any questions over here about the Denmark trip? Okay. Chuck, what are your thoughts from an engineering standpoint?
No, I thought it was good to see, you know, I enjoyed going to the headquarters. That was our first day there, just seeing the way they operate from what they're looking to accomplish in the future. I mean, they're not really happy just being a biocast plant now. They're trying to reutilize their products and produce more power, more energy. They're on version between two and three now, I believe it was. So they're very organized, like I said, very forward thinking. They see, they operate their plants very efficiently. I mean, the way they, there's constant communication between the lab and all their facilities when they're doing the testing of the digesters to make sure that they're operating like they're supposed to be. So they seem to have a process, a discontrol process.
Any concerns from your end?
Not really at this point.
Somebody who want to continue to court and get them to come to town?
I think so.
I think so.
Great, thank you. Moving on, the reports, Ron?
All right, thank you. Well, let's see, spring cleanup, this is the 29th, the flyers are in our packet here. But the scavenger days on the 21st to the 23rd, so if you do not make it, if your items don't get picked up, please bring them to the cleanup. I had a couple calls on the compost today already. Realistically, it's going to be at least a week or two before that gets opened, as is the RV dump. In your packet also is the report or survey from the Department of Health and also the quarterly sampling from the monitoring wells from the 400 Lake Avenue. The 19th and 20th, we are scheduled to flush hydrants and hopefully with the weather turning on, that we'll be able to do it. We have two of our part-timers starting on Wednesday this week, so this week, I probably only work two to maybe three days a week and we'll work them into four days. Let's see, our environmental committee meeting has been scheduled and rescheduled and then rescheduled again here, but it is going to be on April the 20th. And there's going to be a representative from Stearns County there who is going to be going over the pollinators. So if anyone from the public is interested in that, please, you are welcome to attend also. Street sweeping, we will, hopefully tomorrow morning, we will get that machine rolling and be able to get a lot of dirt picked up, a lot of sand on the streets, so hopefully we can get it before it rains. Thank you.
Any questions from Ron? I just had one with the pollinator discussion coming up to the environmental. I saw the headline that the city of Saint Paul endorsed no mow May again. Is that something we want to consider here?
The park board did take that up and they did not make a motion on it. They pretty much deferred it over to the environmental committee. I guess there are some concerns about it. This is going to bring ordinance in, are we going to get more complaints?
Of course not.
So we got more questions than answers at this point.
Yeah, I guess I just sort of thought of it as now they telling people not to do it, but maybe just not enforcing our mowing ordinance for that month.
That's what some cities do when I ask them, because otherwise you have to change the ordinance to allow for that.
I think we thought it's something the environmental committee can talk about at the meeting when, you know, with the pollinators and stuff, and then it'll probably be something for next year.
Okay. Great, thanks Ron. Tark, can you give us a report in a minute and we can move on to our public here?
Yeah, I'll give it to a minute. Before the Denmark trip, I had the MCFOA conference, which was an annual event Jennifer Belinda and I attended last year and this year as well, very helpful, good place to learn new things and, you know, see what other cities are doing. And then of course, you know, had the budget and finance and public works just now. Oh, and the retreat as well.
Great, any questions for Tark? All right. So we'll recess our business meeting. We have a 6:15 public hearing on the business subsidy, so we will open that, it is 6:15. We'll start, Tark, if you could tell us a little bit about why we're having this, what we're asking for.
Yeah, this came out of EDAF. We had an application from, it was called WDR Properties, which is Avon Classic, they're looking for an EDAF loan. Magnify has already agreed to give them the bulk of their financing to build a warehousing facility outside of town near, yeah, near Bork. They had a title issue, which they feel is pretty close to being resolved now. If that is resolved, they'll have, I think, 51 acres there and they're looking to, most of it is agriculture, but they're looking to build on a portion of it, their facility, and then continue renting out the rest for agriculture. I think the amount of, the total size of the financing package around 2.4 million, Magnify is giving them about 2.1. And they say they believe that the company is solid credit, they have no issues with it, they think it's a great company and they're looking forward to working with them. They do have a gap in their financing of around $300,000. They are coming to EDAF requesting this amount. And of course, because of the size, because over 150,000, we must have a public hearing according to state statute. And that's why we are here.
And what is the recommendation of the EDAF board with this?
To do the loan and it's being split with the township, 150,000 each.
Great. I have a couple of questions, but I will hold on. Do we have anybody here to offer a comment or testimony or anything? Any other public questions regarding the loan? Were you here on the business subsidy or just to sort of hang out, watch?
I'm trying to find out what's going on, that's all.
Sure.
You were at the meeting where I said I don't find out about anything that's going on at the township.
Yeah. So I will go on to say, this expansion project is a building out in the township.
Yes.
And the EDAF loan is being funded 50% city, 50% township. Any of this money going into expansion of the labor force within the city?
It's hard to say. They may hire one or two people, but at this point, they probably don't need to, but if they do, it won't be that many, one or two people probably.
Was there discussion about the township taking a greater burden of the loan, maybe two-thirds to the city's one-third?
Their fund is pretty small, so if we don't help, it pretty much wipes out the township's loan. Their money.
They're happy to do it, but yeah, they, they have kind of a limit there. I guess historically, you know, they've been 50-50 on a lot of the loans that we've done.
In the city.
Right, and that was going to be my follow-up, is with safe basements and things like that, how do we do that?
Yeah, it's a loop job, but yeah, it's all been 50-50.
Clean bees, they've all been.
Yeah, same with clean bee as well, so it's been consistently 50-50.
Neil?
I guess I'm a little disappointed that ownership isn't here to answer a question or two. It's real easy to ask for help, but sometimes a face to back it up is a little more meaningful.
Yeah, it's not a small amount of money.
I just wanted to make that comment, so it's on the record.
Do you have other questions that we can help clear up? Anything else then on the public hearing for the EDAF loan? I will share in Councilmember Hertzberg's concern that nobody from ownership or leadership is here to talk on this and explain it. And with that, we'll close our public hearing and go back into our business meeting. We will come back to our consent agenda and new business, everything else in a minute. I do want to jump forward to page 22, old business A, which is the approval of this loan. We'll take it out of order and discuss. So the recommendation from the EDAF loan is to approve the business subsidy and EDAF loan, $300,000, 150 city, 150 township, amortized over 30 years, polluting in 10 at a rate of prime plus a quarter percent. All right. At this point, a motion would be in order unless there's further discussion to be had.
I'll make the motion.
I assume that's stated on the action sheet?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion by Soini, it's stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion?
I'd just like to make one comment on this. Is that the, being that this is moving into the township, and if the township's EDAF loan is less than adequate, I don't know if that's the right term for it, but it wouldn't hurt to point out that the city is doing what they're trying to do, it wouldn't hurt for the township to try to boost up their reserves a little bit too. So is this going to benefit the township quite a bit?
Theirs operates a little different than ours. Theirs is only, can be loaned out, they don't have any other funds like we do. And because there's, how is that it works? I'm trying to remember now. It does work differently because they can't, there's certain things they can't do. And so they only make money on it from the interest. They don't get any more money on it than when people pay it back, and that's why they go with us on loans. And then we manage the loans for the township, they pay us.
Okay, that makes sense.
Here's the one, the additional thing that I had, and they should have framed me up during the public hearing, but if they're good credit and Magnify has no issues, why are we each sitting here needing to talk about gap finance?
I think they have a limit as well.
The credit, we can only do a certain percentage.
That's kind of the underwriting guidelines that they have to follow.
Yeah.
But it's, I mean, it's kind of a thumbs up to hear that Magnify is willing to do the entire amount.
All right, any further discussion? Call out a question, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, none, motion carries seriously. Okay, going back up, is there anybody here for our public floor? Ron, I know you're dying to get off your seat and talk to us. Eric, none, moving on then to the adoption of the consent agenda. That includes, let me just get back there, we're a million pages ahead, the minutes listed on page one from the various meetings, vouchers totaling $228,599.08. Looking for a motion to adopt unless somebody wants something called.
Motion to approve this consent agenda.
Motion by Hertzberg, is there a second? Seconded by Soini. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. All right, onto new business A. We have the League of Minnesota liability coverage, something we review annually, looking at whether or not we want to waive our monetary limits on insurance coverage. Generally, we say no. How would the council like to proceed this year?
Motion to not waive the monetary limits on municipal torque liability establishment in Minnesota statute, authorized later to sign the document.
I'll second.
All right, this is motion by Soini, seconded by Brick, not waiving the monetary limits. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Here's, right, page five, our local FFA would like to do the tractor slash classic car parade on the 19th, or possibly the 10th weather permitting, looking for permission to do so.
They do this every year and I know the retired farmers in the manor enjoy seeing the tractors, so I'll make the motion to approve Painesville FFA tractor classic car parade Wednesday, April 19th, 2023. If it's bad weather, May 10th, 2023, at 2:30 PM.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Soini. Can I propose a family amendment? That somebody reach out to Natalie Lutz and ask her if she can round it and work with Minda and the police to go up to the new facility on Highway 55 as well? And that if she can get that approved through both entities, then this application would encompass that as well?
Again?
Yeah, that could be added to my motion, but a little tough because you're going on Highway 55.
Yeah, I don't know that she would be able to get approval, but...
If Paul's here, we could.
Right.
Because that's a little bit touchier, but with police approval, I will have that amendment.
Are you okay with that amendment? All right, Jean's good with that amendment. So the motion then would be to approve the FFA tractor slash classic car parade on Wednesday, April 19th, with an inclement weather date of May 10th at 2:30, as presented, with the possibility of amending the route contingent on police department approval to include routing the parade past the new facilities on Highway 55.
Cromer's Place.
Cromer's Place. Yes, that was your motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. All right, I'm going to wait just a second for Kristen's hand to catch up in the back as she's taking minutes. Right, so we have the results of our audit coming in. Generally speaking, we've done a special joint budget and finance board along with a city council meeting the day that we present the audit, just a half hour before. I did talk to Jen and Belinda a little bit about this and I said, why don't we just do it all at once rather than having two meetings? My experience has been historically, there's usually one or two council members who forgets to come at the 5:30 meeting anyway, and then they miss out on the information that comes of that. I think it'd probably be easier for us to just do it at 6:00. Ron's here presenting everything anyway.
Puts a little pressure on public works to be done in the hour, which you never know. Normally we are, but there's been times we've run before.
I guess my preference would be, let's just leave it at a regularly scheduled meeting. It means that meeting will take a little longer to go through the audit, but I would rather we have more people here to hear it. Plus, that meeting is generally live streamed and cast and more people will see it that way as well.
That makes sense.
I'm fine.
All right. Anybody want to make the motion for a special meeting or should we just move on?
Move on.
All right. Welcome then, Ron, page eight on the standby power unit.
All right, thank you for your call. We had a file for a grant for the transformer and the pad at the well number eight, which we did get, and also for the generator itself, a portion of that is covered. However, we do need to bring gas into this, for this unit, and that is not covered, so that will need to come out of our water capital improvement funding. And the amount, obviously we can't get too precious for this, as a center point, at a maximum cost of 65, and it is possible it will be less.
Did I hear something down there? Okay.
Please make a motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve customer authorization between city and Painesville and Center Point Energy to install a gas line for the standby power unit at well number eight, an amount of $6,511, with funds to come out of the water CIP.
All right, there's a motion by Hertzberg, it's stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick. Right, approving the customer authorization between the city and Center Point regarding the gas line for the power unit at well eight, funds coming out of the water CIP. Any further discussion on this? None, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, Ron with the water festival.
All right, thank you. Water festival this year, if you look through there, it is, well, going to be 100% covered by the grant. That's the first year in quite a while. However, next year, we will not have a grant available for it. So we are not soliciting our donors, donations this year, will be held up for next year. We're pretty well set, you know, the, you're talking about the t-shirts at the school already, so that is in the process. We have everything lined up, pretty much the same as last year, other than the North Fork program. We have everything lined up, pretty much the same as last year, other than the North Fork River, they had a conflict, so Minnesota Rural Water is setting in for a land group there. Other than that, I'm going to thank everybody who has sponsored it in the past, and we'll be back next year for your donation.
I know we chatted a little bit about possibly extending it so that you could do a longer city tour and things like that. Did that ever go anywhere, or?
No, it did not.
Okay. And I knew it was just kind of a thought at the time, so.
It is, you know, we are extremely rushed on the tour. So, that's something we're gonna have to work for the month.
All right. Any other discussion for Ron, otherwise a motion would be in order?
I'll make the motion to approve twenty twenty-three Water Festival for May twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
All right, this is motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, because I haven't heard from him yet. So we have the motion to approve the twenty twenty-three Water Festival for May twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? None? All right, moving on to page fourteen, along with page one of our agenda, or updating the agenda, excuse me, regarding the purchase of the twenty twenty-three Chevy Silverado. We have, well, Ron, I'd like you to just maybe give the history.
Thank you. If you recall, back in, I think it was September of twenty-one, we actually approved the ordering of the two thousand, well, it would have been trading in the two thousand eleven unit, and in February of twenty-two, we did the twenty thirteen. They were both approved, and if you recall, about six months ago, we got notice that neither of these units would be delivered. So, we've just been waiting patiently, and actually, we do have a painful chef here. We did come forward with a government program. We did contact, and for the records, yes, we did contact our local dealer here, and we do have in our updated packet, the notice from Boyer Ford. I had called them up, and they said, no, there is absolutely nothing available on the state contract as currently, it's a comeback in June, you know, they will likely have more information at that time. So we did try to do our diligence and get three quotes, one from Painsville Chef, one from Boyer, and one from our locals. Actually, we did only receive the one, and that is in the amount of thirty-seven thousand thirty dollars. The Public Works Committee did review this beforehand. Also, we did have the sheet, if there would be some available, the price that we have got on the state contract bid would have been right around thirty-nine thousand. So the quote that we have is very competitive. So the Public Works did make the recommendation that we do approve it.
Yeah, Ron, we have one Chevy in our fleet, no. Has that been a control three?
Yes, yes, it has, we have had no issues with it.
Good.
Just making sure I understand what you're doing, the one we did in September was an F-two-fifty.
Correct.
And that was the twenty nineteen, twenty thirteen, one fifty.
Correct, and the, to replace that unit, there still is nothing available under the government contracts. They're both looking, however, as of date, no, there's nothing, both of us have to be patient. You know, it's not an emergency at this point, so I don't feel we have to run out and pay an extra cost for anything.
Yeah, so my thought in looking at this was, first of all, how would it relate to what we were going to purchase earlier? And that F-two-fifty was going to be like thirty-one thousand or something like that.
Correct.
So this is quite a bit more, but look at what the market's done in the last year.
What the market's done.
And this is still under the state contract price.
Yes.
So I'm, if we're under the state contract price, I'm going to give it the circumstances moving forward, and I would certainly hope that that would placate the auditors.
And we're keeping the truck for the part-timers, part crew, and the ninety-five that the part-timers are using will be surplus.
It's a two thousand three.
Oh, I thought, okay. But that will be surplus.
That could be surplus, yes.
But there without decals on the side? I'll make the motion to, the word we knew, but can I, just maybe to make the auditors happy, make sure your motion includes language on our efforts to find quotes, and how we're underneath the state contract?
I'll make the motion to secure the twenty twenty-three fifteen hundred Chevy Silverado from Painsville Chevrolet, and to the price they gave us, thirty-seven oh thirty, is a, under the thirty-nine thousand state bid that Boyer presented, and they were not able to supply, and neither was our local Ford dealership.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Brick, to go ahead and purchase the two thousand twenty-three Chevrolet fifteen, Silverado fifteen hundred from Painsville Chevrolet at a price of thirty-seven thousand thirty dollars. In doing so, noting that there are no competing quotes because no trucks can be available underneath the state bid or from our local dealership, and noting that the price from Painsville Chevrolet Buick of thirty-seven thousand thirty dollars is less than the state bid amount anyway. So anything that we would get from the state bid would likely be more expensive. Ron, where is the funding coming from for this?
This will come out of the Park Street and Water Resort.
Great, and all of those are appropriately funded of course.
Correct, yes.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing signal, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? None? Right. Moving on, on page nineteen. Park, you were to give a report.
Yes, on hiring of a police officer. Some of you are aware that we have Officer Schultz resigning, and then, of course, we have our two longer-term part-timers, Officer Leckul and Chegum, that are retiring. And then, there's also another officer, full-time, that most likely will be resigning soon. So with this in mind, and given the hiring climate, we would like, and the recommendation from Budget and Finance was to recommend approving or allowing us to open up the position. The only downside I feel is that, given the current climate of hiring, we're still gonna struggle to find qualified candidates for this position. But nevertheless, we would like to open it up and see if we can find some, you know, possible candidates for this position.
Great. This is one we've discussed at length at our retreat, so I think the motion would be in order at this point.
I'll make the motion to approve starting the hiring process for full-time police officer with the tentative hiring process to allow Police Department and Administration to continue with the process until a recommendation may be taken.
Okay, there's a motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, any discussion? Target, I guess the question I have is looking at all of this with the interview panels and stuff, how will that work along with like the backgrounds and stuff with Jen and Belinda doing the HR now?
Well, the Police Department will still be doing the background checks.
But they'll take the applications and?
They are, yeah, they will be taking the applications and.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? None? Right. We met for our annual retreat, last week, we covered a lot over the course of a long and short day. Left a lot left to cover. We talked about doing another half-day meeting to finish going over the retreat items. Jen's got some proposed dates for us here, including seventeenth, eighteenth, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. Anybody have a preferred date?
Later in April.
If I had a preference, it would be earlier, seventeenth, eighteenth.
Can't do seventeen.
Do you have any of these days for finally, by the way? Actually, no, except the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-four and twenty-six are bad for me, otherwise I can do the rest.
How about seventeen or eighteen?
Seventeen or eighteen are fine.
Well, the nice thing about the eighteenth is we already have the E-DAP meeting, so we just go from that one to this one. That's true.
That works.
Yeah.
That works.
We have that at seven thirty, so by eight-thirty we'd be ready.
And we would have breakfast.
There you go.
If they're early, you can order breakfast.
I think I, um.
Ten is Doris.
I work on the seventeenth, so. Yeah, eighteenth is probably the best. No, I.
Seems eighteenth is the way to go, though.
Yep.
Well, I asked you, ten to our office now, I was thinking if we.
Had her break, so.
Well, you have breakfast at Hilltop, and then the rest of us could have breakfast at Queen B's.
Eighteen for a break?
Yes. Well, maybe that isn't a bad idea to have the meeting at eight for the ones that are at E-DAP. Do a plate to eat and start the meeting when we're done with you.
Yeah.
Done, your doors would be fine without.
Let's just have her make some common goals.
She's got, she's got a curtain to pull.
Yeah.
You can leave behind her.
I like the idea of meeting over there.
We could both eat out over there. I wouldn't be telling you.
So I'll make the motion for Tuesday, the eighteenth, at Queen B's, official starting would be eight o'clock to twelve-thirty.
Right, there's a motion for Hertzberg to have a continued retreat on Tuesday, August eighteenth at eight A.M. at Queen B's here in Painsville, is there a second?
April.
April, thank you.
We're gonna have the whole meeting over there?
Yep.
Start at eight A.M.?
Eight A.M.
Okay.
And we'll get there, we'll work out with our E-DAP.
Yeah, so some numbers might be five, ten minutes late.
But we may be early. Last time we worked out.
Yeah.
You never know.
So, motion is to your seven meeting for Tuesday, April eighteenth at Queen B's, starting at eight A.M., made by Hertzberg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Brick, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? None? All right. One of the other things that came out as we talked with the various department heads is that there's a lot to cover, we discussed a lot. And how we looked at sort of doing a couple of hours or maybe a half-day with Public Works and the police seem to have the most to discuss, but we do have five full departments. So how would we like to handle that, where would we like to go, what time, when, and how, and all of those things?
Tuesday, three days for those.
I think we just have, we determine what departments we want to meet with. Public Works and police have the most to cover. Liquor, we've got some questions about a new building and things like that, along with hiring the assistant manager once we get to that point. But that may be one that can wait until the fall. Fire Department, I'm worried about staffing and funding for trucks and buildings and stuff like that. But again, I think that can maybe wait until the fall, and you had some ideas for, like a video, to try and recruit some new officers.
Well, let's pick two of the five.
Yeah.
And then go from there, we need more of them. That's enough for April.
It's May.
We're in May now.
Yeah, these, we're looking at May.
The two that worked good for me was May eighth and May tenth.
May ninth, we are free all day, or at least that's what it looks like on Jen's calendar there, I'm free all day on Tuesday, May ninth.
But we only had two in the afternoon for the ninth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading these lines wrong, yes, Jean, you're right. The first and the third have both times available. Third, I could do.
I could do any of those in the afternoon. No, why? I still could. But prefer to do the afternoon.
Well, I can't do Monday, the two in this is all, because I have a story.
Okay.
How about Wednesday, May third, and Tuesday, May ninth?
Afternoons?
Afternoons.
Okay.
Go to work.
Ron, which of those days is better for you?
Either one.
Either one, okay. Well, we just say Tuesday, or Wednesday, May third, will be Public Works. Tuesday, May ninth, will be the police, afternoon sessions. Do we do it on twelve-thirty or one o'clock?
Twelve, you're smiling at me.
Okay.
One is good too.
One is good too.
Maybe we'll say twelve-thirty, that way, Jean, if you and I have to go pick up kids, it's just a little more time.
And so we can do it? What are we talking about?
I don't usually have to, I'm just getting something, I will pretty soon.
And we got the size right.
I could go here.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're strong.
I would say you may be.
This is news, on Wednesday.
Oh, you're right.
Car supplies are just.
On Wednesday?
And Thursday.
Wednesday and Thursday.
Well, we're doing Wednesday and Tuesday.
Yeah, okay, so.
So Tuesday would be good.
We'd over the shop.
Yeah, so let's do.
Wednesday at the shop.
Wednesday, May third, that'll be the Public Works at the shop in the afternoon. Tuesday, May ninth, in the afternoon, here, talking about police. Kristen, I hope you got that gobbledygook mess. Feel free to run out here and wave your arms and yell at us if you didn't. Somebody want to make a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Brick, to set two special working sessions. The first one will be on Wednesday, May third, two thousand twenty-three, starting at twelve-thirty P.M. Talking about Public Works, and that will be held at the Public Works shop. The second one will be Tuesday, May ninth, twenty twenty-three, starting at twelve-thirty P.M., talking about police. That will be here in the city council chambers or the conference room if need be, but it will be here at City Hall, the Science Director. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so the motion was by Brick, seconded by Soini, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? None? Okay. Moving on, and we need some clarification, tired if you want to lighten us a little bit more on how we're paying for these mask lenses.
Well, in one meeting, we said that it would come out of small equipment, and that's actually not accurate, it will be coming out of the general general fund, so I think we just need to make that clarification, that it is coming out of there, not the small equipment. Since it's easier to account, and the reason is, it's easier to account with all the other entities if it's out of the general fund.
In general, general fund, everybody pays.
Yes.
Just the city.
Yeah, so it's easier to account now where it does general fund, so that's why we said that. And then in the next meeting, it was indicated that will be the small equipment, which is not correct.
The recommendation from Administration is that we clarify that these will be paid out of fire department general fund, and a motion regarding that would be in order.
I'll make the motion to approve the city paying for firefighter mask lenses, one pair up to every two years, with funds coming out of the fire department general fund.
There's a motion by Hertzberg, is stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed? None? Right, Ron, back to your fancy new tires.
All right, thank you, at the last meeting, this item was brought up, and it was tabled due to, we didn't have a second quote, however, I did contact our local people in town here, and they cannot get these tires. They are new enough that they are not on the market yet. And that is the reason, the tires, again, they are, there's no tube in them, they're strictly, obviously, they won't go flat, that's one of the big selling points, and the other one is, they do not make the tracks that the other tires are, and I did our whole list here to get two sets, to try them, and then when we get the new units in a year, two, or three, we will can decide if we want to put these units on. and therefore stick with the standard tire.
And if these, if these work, as we get flats in the future, we could go with these.
That is correct, we could.
Yes. Uh, Ron, I do have one question on page thirty, your illustration. Is the one on the bottom where they have a more aggressive thread lug? Would that be higher priced or something we should look at or not?
I'm gonna have to check into that one.
Cause if it's the same kind of money.
Right.
Might make sense to go with a little better lug.
Yeah, or maybe one of each and see how they perform.
Sure.
Yeah.
So with that in mind, I did have a conversation with Dan Bensfield today. Um, he had a quote, um, but he didn't have it ready for me yet. Um, two pneumatics, four seventy five per tire plus rim. Uh, and there's quite a discrepancy in the price here, difference. Where you've got, uh, for two, excuse me, two pneumatic tires, there is one side, uh, running in the area of about fifteen hundred, eighteen hundred dollars according to the rim versus a six thousand, that's quite a difference in price. Um, and he mentioned that it should last fifteen years. More likely that the tires will rot before they go flat. So to tell you the truth, I mean, this looks like a really good idea, the price is very high with the, uh, the cost of some pneumatic tires are fifty five hundred and thirty dollars. Doesn't seem right, it just seems like it's way different. And to tell you the truth, I would rather see this twelve thousand dollars go towards, um, the C N P fund, cause to tell you the truth, I kind of was an eye opener this past winter with that, that dump truck. That was needed real quick and the money was in there. And I have to tell you the truth, I would rather prefer to see that money stay there and just go with the pneumatic. Um, to keep the fund completely furnished. We never know what's gonna happen with the pivots in the long run.
One thing you're not picking on, if we don't have flat tires, we have a lot, uh, to change a tire off the middle of cornfield, you're talking half a day. Lubin, jacks. It's, uh, workman's comp potential or low in back and the savings on no flat tires makes this really economical.
Well, this is where we have to make, make the choice as a, as a council of, you want to spend six thousand dollars on, on a set of tires or potentially up to two thousand, um, in the long run. Right now, it just seems like it's, uh.
Well, Ron had a price here of fifty five thirty for tires.
And, and Dan Bensfield mentioned to me that that number is way up, he could not figure out how that number came about.
How often do these tires go flat?
How often?
Yeah.
Usually in a, in a year will have somewhere between five to ten.
Okay, so it's kind of, it's fairly frequent that they go flat.
Yeah, oh yeah, that was. Well, it's not just the labor, the potential for a man down for back injury is huge.
Yeah.
Well, and I know monsters.
Right, from the safety board meetings, there've been discussions about, you know, it used to just be Bob going out there by himself and I think Jay Lee's started to go out there with him, uh, so that there's two people out there in case of an accident or something like that. Uh, now we're having two people taken away. And I guess I'm wrong, but they don't generally go out on a Monday morning where they're, you're replacing them during business hours. I mean, are, do you get callouts to fix these and replace these or?
Well, we do not work on weekends, but these units, well, yes, they'll wait till Monday morning if, what is the issue?
But we're still looking at taking two people out on the way for other stuff.
Well, maybe we just want to get on the one unit, just to give it a try, I mean, it'd be nice, I mean, the other big thing is, uh, the rust in the field. Yeah. I mean, if it does what they say it's gonna do, it'll eliminate the rust, you know, now we're talking where and tearing the vehicles. So, I mean, it all kind of snowballs.
I can live with one. Just to try it out. And I'm not opposed to, to try and run and see what, see what we end up with. Cause in, in time, they'll tell us if it's worth it or not. And I would feel much more comfortable going that way.
When was the last time we had a set replaced?
A set of tires replaced? Oh, that's been a few years now.
They remind me a set is two, right?
A set is two, correct.
So we go one set, we're talking six thousand?
Yeah.
Correct.
Could, I can live with that.
Well, I think we look to ourselves to try it.
Yeah.
Cause like I said, the savings on changing tires and if we're buying new units to go that way would make a lot of sense, you know what?
And I think with one set, we'll be able to find out, um, through the experience of where this is gonna lead us. You know, if, if this thing lasts as long as it says it is, in the meantime, they chase, they're changing pneumatic tires, stuff, well then maybe it's time to move more of this. But I just think that the results will, will be able to tell us a, a better, uh, version of the story.
And I would hope that once these here, oh, for a number of years, their price will come down.
Yeah. Yeah.
I guess my bigger concern is, I love the idea of saving the overtime, saving the work comp. But if we're really looking at a difference of this company saying, well, a set of pneumatics is fifty five hundred, but locally we get them for fifteen hundred.
I'd like to see the.
Be, being honest with us on the other things.
I'd like to see the data from, uh, uh, whoever it is, I have a record where they came up with the number fifty, fifty five hundred and fifty three hundred. Yeah, fifty five hundred and thirty dollars, I'd like to see where they came up with the, uh, the metrics for that. Because I talked to Dan and he says they, they change these often enough because there's plenty around. There's two different sizes they go, they would go to eleven something or twelve four, like whatever. Um, but I would rather just look the, uh, the experience speak for itself.
Now, and that's just the tire, you're not pricing a new rear view.
Well, again, it was four seventy five a tire plus the rim. So that for a set of two, you're looking at, I would probably say somewhere between fifteen, eighteen hundred dollars maybe for a set of two.
With the rim.
With, with the rim, but then again too, you know, you've got the, the installation stuff with these here. Uh, if we were to try a new set and find out that there's absolutely no maintenance on it, then I do believe that the, uh, the experience and the information that we're getting from it is gonna speak, um, where it's gonna be cost effective.
I think we need to try a set.
Cause normally we'd say you replace the tire, the rim is rusted off. For getting close, I don't think that has happened.
Yeah.
Well, either.
Well, I agree, I think we should try a set. But Ron, can you do me a favor and before we hit buy, just do a little bit of digging and make sure that this company is legit with the prices it's giving us? And if we get a question, that'll be flagged and printed back.
The company is legit, we've been working with this company for forty years.
Oh, okay.
Uh, however, I will double check that price.
The fifty five thirty for the pneumatic?
Thirty.
I would feel better if you did that.
Yeah.
All right, okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to get one set at six thousand. Money coming out of the, that would be the sewer equipment replacement fund. Sewer equipment replacement fund, so.
Right, there's a motion by Hertzberg to buy one set and track tires from Hydrone Camery. Out of six thousand percent, funds coming out of the sewer equipment replacement fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, any further discussion? None, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, helpful things for informational, weigh the budget in forty thousand dollar transfer. We have the less than sanitation rates, the D R E school trainings, sanitary reports, the samplings that Ron talked about earlier, police reports, library report on page sixty eight. We have our scavenger days and our cleanup coming up. One note, Ron said like if you put your stuff out and it doesn't get picked up for scavenger days, please bring it to the cleanup to get rid of it. Uh, a note, do not bring it to the community service center, Allison pays enough for dumpsters, she doesn't need to pay for other stuff. Uh, otherwise there is a recent public hearing, those are Sterns County and additional police department reports.
We, we don't have to approve the, uh, state patrol, uh, training for the.
No, some of the things we changed a while ago are as long as everything's staying under budget.
Cause I bet all we have to pay is per deal because the school is covered by the hydra control.
Yeah.
But it's all state though, correct?
It's a way.
Yeah, it is out of state.
But no big deal, we probably have to pay for, uh.
Now it's going to be held at Maple Grove, rather consider Maple Grove.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking the one, different one is out of state.
Maple Grove, something like.
All right, anything else with that, we urge you to disconnect, everyone.